Good evening. Welcome to Davenport City Hall, the meeting protocol and decorum. I do want to read a message. As we start this evening, I would like to take a moment on behalf of Mayor Klipsch and the City Council to thank you, the citizens of Davenport, for your support and involvement in city initiatives. We appreciate your continued engagement. As noted, Mayor Klipsch is not here this evening because he is representing the City of Davenport and the Mississippi Rivers, River Cities and Towns Initiative at the Global River Talks in Bonn, Germany. This is a trip that is funded by the MRCTI and is an opportunity for the mayor to participate on an international level in the conversation regarding the future health of rivers around the world and particularly the Mississippi River. He will return in time for next week's meeting and if he doesn't, I'll be happy to fill in for him. So with that, I'll read the meeting protocol and decorum. Good evening. Again, thanks for being here. As we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance and all those who are viewing this meeting at home, on television, or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the City Council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're happy you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence all cell phones and other electronic handheld devices as they can interfere with the audio system in the chambers. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end of the meeting. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. With that, we'll have a moment of silence. Alderwoman Rossen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, Alderwoman Rossen. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Meeker.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
This is the portion where I'm supposed to read the meeting protocol and decorum, but I already did that, so we'll skip over that part. Will an alderman move approval of the minutes of the council meeting for October 25th?
(Inaudible).
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. Is there a city administrator update?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Will an alderman move approval of the report on the Committee of the Whole of November 1st? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion approved. We have several appointments this evening. I will read all the appointments and then ask for a motion to approve these. First, we have a Civil Rights Commission appointee, Erie Johnson, who's a new appointment. We have several appointments to the Design and Review Board, Zachary Howell, which is a new appointment, and then three reappointments, PJ Slovigin, Derek Nix, and Greg Lundgren. And then the Citizens Advisory Committee, we have two new appointments, Mark Holliday and Rohan Genj. Would someone move the approval? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, any opposed? All right, those motions are approved. We do have a couple of presentations, but I do want to take the liberty, if my colleagues would agree, to move the petitions and communications of, from council members up in front of this, and then we'll go into those presentations. So are there any comments from, or communications from council members? Alderwoman Rossen.
Yes, just a reminder that the Bug Hotel dedication is happening this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the East Bluff Community Garden at 13th and Grand, and the Bug Hotel was an idea brought back from our sister city in Carlisle, Ireland. It's a nod to the importance of insects in pollinating our garden, as well as a nod to our sister city Carlisle because they have bug hotels in all of their community gardens over there. So if you have a chance and you're, if you're not planning to go to the Veterans Parade on Friday at 10:00 a.m., stop by and be in the video that we will be sending to Carlisle, Ireland. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Just a reminder that I do have a third ward meeting Saturday, November 11th, at 10:00 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church, and Nicole Gleason with our Public Works Department will be our guest, so we hope we can see you there. And again, Saturday, November 11th, 10:00 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church. Also, a second reminder about the ceremony on Saturday, November 11th, at 12:00 noon at the city cemetery, and we will be recognizing the veterans who were interred there. They come from the Schleswig-Holstein wars all the way through World War II, so I hope you can join us there. Cemetery's at 1625 Rockingham Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder again, Veterans Parade, Davenport, 10:00 a.m., kicks off at Western and Fourth, thank you, Friday.
That's a great reminder, thank you. I just had a couple of really quick things I wanted to mention. First, congratulate my colleagues up here and those that will join the City Council in January for their success last night, and more importantly, I thank all those who were willing to throw their hat in the rings and run for local office. It is not an easy task, and I appreciate their willingness to do so. Real quick, too, I just want to thank both the public and our staff. The public for their patience with our work on two large projects, infrastructure projects, Rockingham Road and Kimberly Division. Those are big projects, they have had some hiccups, but appreciate the public's patience in dealing with that, and also staff in, again, remaining on top of these and ensuring that they're at least moving traffic now and there's some more work to do, but again, appreciate your due diligence on these big, big projects. Third, I wanted to acknowledge one of our colleagues, Alderman Mattson. As some of you might have seen, Alderman Mattson and his family were acknowledged at the halftime of the, or it was pregame, I think, wasn't it? First quarter of the Iowa, Ohio State game last week for four generations of service in the military. Is it all Army, or is it the military?
My father was in the Navy.
He was in the Navy, okay, so four generations in the military, so I wanted to just recognize him, that was a big honor. And after I saw the result of the game, I called the Hawks, and you have to go to Wisconsin now, they're going to do it again next Saturday. I thought maybe we identified a trend that we could continue winning, so, but seriously, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge you. And then last is, this is Alderman Meeker's last, last meeting. Alderman Meeker stepped back a couple of years ago after eight years of service, chose not to run for reelection, and then when we needed him to fill in, when Alderman Justin moved to Florida, he willingly did so. He did a great job, so it was nice to have him back for, even if it was just a few months on council, and, but when Alderman Clul, or Alderman Let Clul will be sworn in, I think, by next week, and so this will be Gene's last meeting, so I just wanted to take a moment, and let's give Gene a round of applause.
I'd like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the City Council asking me to serve out the term of Jeff's Justin. Jeff was a good friend of ours, he left town, of course, and I had just moved into the Sixth Ward, so the mayor feels like I bailed him out, quite frankly, when he had to find somebody to replace Jeff. Anyhow, but it's been a real fun time. Like Jason said, I've been on for eight years and came back for a short term. I want to express my appreciation to the staff, they're the unsung heroes here tonight because they're behind the scenes all the time, and they have to follow all our orders and directions and stuff, and I'm sure they get upset many times, but they're always the people that follow through with the detail and make us look good, so I want to thank you all for all the good service you do for the City of Davenport. I know Rich will do a good job, I've known Rich a long time, and he'll be a good council member for the Sixth Ward and will serve the Sixth Ward very well. Actually, the timing is very good, quite frankly, because I've got a whole basketball schedule lined up with grandsons, so I'm going to be very busy from now on through, so it'll work out really fine. I know my little wife back there is hiding in the back.
(Laughter).
There she is.
She's also here to make sure I don't run again. But this is the final time, but thanks again, all council members and all, for allowing me to serve these last few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Alderman Ambrose wants to comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I've known Gene for a long time, and he's made, and his family have made great sacrifices, but, you know, Gene's been involved with economic development in the City of Davenport for 30 years, and he's been the catalyst to not only billions, but maybe hundreds of billions of dollars of economic impact to our great city while Gene was here. And you just don't realize what Gene has done, not only for the City Council, but for our great city, and I, I can't thank Gene enough, and I thank his wife for allowing him to do it.
Thank you. Thanks again, Gene, we appreciate it. Moving on, we have three presentations this evening, and the first is the swearing in of a new police officer, Brandon Askew. So I will meet the chief and Brandon at the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Gordon and council. Paul Sikorski, your police chief, and I have, I'm honored tonight to stand in front of you to uphold the tradition of the City of Davenport and the Davenport Police Department, and especially tonight in front of this large group of our community members, especially a lot of our young ones, so I'm glad that you all get to, to watch something that's sacred for the Davenport Police Department, and for their sake, and I know all of you know this, but when a, when a new police officer is hired in the City of Davenport, they swear under oath, and you're going to watch that tonight, that Alderman Gordon is going to do, and they, they hold on to that oath for their entire career. They're responsible for that, they hold it deep in their heart, and after a very long testing and vetting process involving dozens of people, we're at a point this evening where I had the opportunity to review and to hire a new police officer, and that is Brandon Askew. And Brandon, you want to come up? So, Brandon.
Yeah, that's okay.
I want to read a little bit about, about Brandon because he comes in somewhat of a different route than, than some of our new police officers. So Brandon is from Mercer County, Illinois. He graduated from Westmere High School, and after high school, he started working for medic, so he was an EMT with, with medic, and so he was, he started saving people early on in his life. While he, while he was working for medic, he was also working towards and earned his bachelor's degree in law enforcement administration from Western Illinois University. Brandon's first police assignment was with the Memphis, Tennessee Police Department, a large metropolitan police department where Brandon worked for a couple of years, and Brandon wanted to get back home. He came back to the Quad Cities and was recently working for the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department. I had to apologize to Sheriff Bustos for acquiring Brandon from his agency. While, while at the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department, Brandon's trained as a tactical EMS officer, and he was also recently certified as a SWAT officer. Brandon's currently working towards his master's degree in criminal justice administration from Columbia Southern University, and it's my honor to also introduce Brandon's family. He has a lot of family members and friends, too. I see Mitch is here. Mitch is here. Mitch is, Mitch Cunningham is a fire, works for the Fire Department in Moline, a good friend of Brandon's. So I'd like to have Jen come up and Alderman Gordon can, can do the oath of office.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Brandon Askew.
Aye, Brandon Askew.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer of the City of Davenport.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the police officer.
Of the police officer.
Of the City of Davenport. County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, your Davenport police officer.
Any of Brandon's family members like to come up and take a quick picture, and then, and then we'll, we'll get out of here, you're certainly welcome, too.
(Laughter).
Well, you should be there, then.
(Laughter).
Okay. Good.
(Applause).
Well, Brandon and his family are working their way to the back, I just wanted to put a quick plug in. We currently have applications open for police officer for Davenport, and we're holding our first workshop this evening at the Duck Creek Golf Pavilion, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. Let's have another round of applause for the new officer. Yeah, anything you can do to, you know, council staff, the public, spread the word that we do have some openings and we're going out into the public, as the chief mentioned, to try and get a robust applicant pool, so spread that word. It's important that we have a robust pool for our police officer candidates. So with that, I should probably just stay out there, the moment that most of you have been waiting for, the 2017 Halloween Parade Awards. So, real quick, before I come out, we had 56 entries from youth groups, dance troops, local businesses, and something new that we did this year was city departments were eligible to enter and have a kind of internal competition, so we'll present a trophy to the best city department. We had participation from police, fire, public works, library, Parks and Rec, and a big thank you to Tiffany Thorne Dyke, actually, who did the bulk of the work of this from our staff, and I know Alderwoman McGinnis, Alderman Grip, Dunn, and the mayor were also very actively engaged at the event the day of, so we had a great time. A week goes Saturday, and so we're going to give out some awards, so I'll meet Tiffany up front. I have some concerns, I want to, no, I'm teasing. So our first trophy tonight is for the best dance unit, and artistic intensity dance company was the winner of this prize. If they could come forward, we'll give you your trophy. Okay, best youth group is the Girl Scouts Troop 2387.
All right, let's all squeeze in. Yeah, put the adults behind and the kids can go up front. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. You guys want to scoot up just a little bit? Because I can squeeze in. Squeeze in, squeeze in a little bit, we're told. Kurt, you got it, or no? Congratulations. Good job. Thank you very much. Thank you for participating.
All right, the best youth group runner-up is Cub Scout Pack Five.
Pull up the trophy.
Pull it up real high. There you go.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, best commercial entry was Orange Theory Fitness. All right.
Thank you very much. And the runner-up for best commercial float was Rosecrant's New Life Outpatient Center.
So is this like the deal award, the best float? So this is best float, this is like, you know, the real deal. So best float was MS Home Improvement.
All right, thank you, thank you guys, very much. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, and then best float runner-up was Snowstar. All right, best costume was Davenport Public Works Central High School National Art Honor Society.
Go ahead, sorry. Congratulations.
Okay, so I'm told the mayor's trophy is the real deal, of, the winner of all winners. So the mayor's trophy was Rule and Rule in Fillmore Elementary.
We will give that to Ms. Ferguson.
Hi, Ronnie, how are you? Good, you're good, thank you.
(Laughter).
Squeeze in, gotta squeeze in.
Is this still, is this still a city council meeting at this point?
Yeah.
Oh, he's over there.
Oh.
Do we, let's, we'll look at you now, too, so we'll say that. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for participating. Jennifer, how are you?
Um, let's see, okay, so the one we, we've all been waiting for is best city department, and apparently it was the Fire Department.
Congratulations, Fire Department. Congratulations.
Good job. I think you and Rita were the judges.
Is that the only judge?
Yeah.
Okay, and we had several judges, but our elected judge was Alderwoman Rossen, and so we thank you, Rita, for, for judging, and as you can see, we have great participation from all over the city, 56 different floats, so still a great parade, so thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, we do have a couple of items of business to, to take care of tonight.
One more presentation.
One more presentation, I did that last time. The Davenport Fire Department and Joe Moreno Fire Cracker Run Guns and Hoses Challenge. Is Joe here?
Yep.
Excellent, there he is, come on up. Sorry, I forgot about you.
(Laughter).
It's not intentional, it's just I don't do this very often.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well.
Do I need to be out there, maybe, you know? Holy cow. Why don't you tell us what we're getting, because that's quite a trophy right there?
It's a traveling trophy, and, uh...
You might need to do it in the mic, otherwise they won't hear you at home.
This is a, this is a traveling trophy that we made many years ago for the Fire Cracker Run, and it actually has two real revolvers from the East Moline Police Department.
Oh, wow.
That are, by the way, inoperable, so if you took these, yeah, if you took those out, there, there's no way they, they would work. And handcuffs from our good friend, Rich DeLary, who, who passed away, and, and it's a fire hydrant, so the purpose of this trophy, it's called the Guns and Hoses, it's a division that we have in the Fourth of July Fire Cracker Run. We've had this race for 35 years, this year was our 35th, and it really involves the, the local police and fire departments, so in this case, your department, your, your Davenport Fire Department, won the, the trophy because they had the fastest department in the Quad City area, so my good friend firefighter Zach Solis is, is here, and I, I long overdue in presenting this, but I wanted to come to a city council meeting and formally present it to the department and to Zach, who was the spearhead and the leader of the team, and also at this time to thank the city council for all of your support over the years. You've done a terrific job supporting the Quad Cities Marathon, and I, I just couldn't come and present the trophy. I also wanted to formally and officially and personally thank each and every one of you for your support. You made a commitment 20... You made a commitment twenty years ago to support the, the Quad Cities Marathon by providing the support needed to, to do that, and I greatly appreciate it. So I, I hope you're very proud of that event, because it, it does unite the Quad Cities. It's five races through the four cities, over the three bridges, in the two states, through the one island, all within the view of the Mississippi River. So, thank you very much for that, and at this time, I'd like to present the trophy to...
Yeah, please do. Post for some photos there with Kurt. Joe, thank you too for all you do, for the Quad Cities Marathon, for the, the Firecracker Run, and then you've, and I'm drawing a blank on the name, but you do a run too where you raise money for the USO and for the AUSA.
The Freedom Run.
The Freedom Run.
In August, and by the way, I organize another one called the Gonzo Cinco de Mayo Race here in Davenport.
Correct, yeah.
I, I just can't thank you, all, your departments, your fire department, your police department, your health inspector, every department just really steps up, and I greatly appreciate that. And if it's okay, sir, I'd like to, I'll just leave some items here, there.
Sure.
There are marathon gloves, there are marathon arm warmers, and some pins that I'd like to just, it's a twentieth anniversary pin that I'd like to leave to the council members. So you can proceed with your meeting, I used to sit in that chair.
I know, I'm, yeah, you did.
So I know, you've got business to take care of, you don't need me long-winded here, but...
That's okay.
Proceed, and I'll just leave these items here with you.
We'll grab them when the meeting adjourns, so, again, thank you very much, Joe, and he does a lot for the Quad Cities, so let's give Joe Moreno a round of applause.
Thank you. There's posters too.
I'm sorry?
There's plenty of posters for the public, yeah.
Perfect, so the public can have access to that too after we're done, so, thank you, Joe. Oh, he's gonna pass those out now, okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe, good to see ya.
Excellent, thanks again, Joe, we appreciate it. Yeah, we'll leave that for the mayor, okay. And I apologize for, for, again, for forgetting I had three presentations. Uh, so we do have two items on the discussion agenda for this evening. Uh, the first is a first consideration of ordinance for case number REZ seventeen dash ten, request of women in spiritual hope ministries incorporated to rezone seventy-eight, uh, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square feet, more or less, of property located at fifty-two ten North Division Street. From R four, moderate density dwelling district to R five M, medium density dwelling district in Ward Eight. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address this item? Please come forward and state your name and ward or address.
Brett Marshall, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Wish Ministries. And I just want to, I, the executive director for Wish Ministries is here along with some of the board members, and I know that they're gonna want to get up and, and speak in favor of this. Um, but I just wanted to address, I think last time at the committee of the whole, there was some misunderstanding about, um, how many people were gonna be in the property and, and some other things like that, compliance with parking, off-street parking and things. We've worked over the past week or so with city staff to address those concerns, and I believe they've been clarified in your packets that you have. Um, but if, if they're not, if anybody has any additional questions, I'm happy to, to answer those now before I turn it over to the executive director.
Okay, if there's questions, we'll let you know at that time.
Very good.
Thank you very much, anyone else from the public?
Good evening, my name's Lynn Johnson, I'm the executive director and co-founder of Wish Ministries Women in Spiritual Hope. I'm here to speak in, in favor of this. Uh, we are trying to get this house ready to house women who post incarceration, that have nowhere else to go. They will not be awarded from court systems. They will be free and off paper and of their choosing to come to this house to get a second chance at life. Um, to, it's going to be a faith-based home where they can learn to reinvent themselves with their Lord and Savior.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address this item? Okay, council, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderwoman Gordon.
I'm, sorry. Does someone else want to speak? I'm sorry. Ma'am, you're gonna need to speak into the mic and your name and ward.
My name is Sandra Follen. Uh, my mother is the, the house four foot from the back fence line, Shirley Follen.
Okay.
Um, lots of concerns as far as these people were told, we were told that they had to sign a year contract. Now, since this has nothing to do with any of law enforcement of anything, what does this contract mean? You can't detain people, only the law can contain people, so, they're supposed to sign a year commitment that they're, wanna stay there for a year and get a clean bill of health and be ready for society. So like, we have a question on that. Um, so, if they, if the lady's there two weeks and she decides she wants to leave tomorrow, is she gonna go knock on my mom's door and say, hey, give me a ride downtown? So questions on that. Also, we have the questions of, again, as far as this being considered a spiritual hope to them better their life, or is it really just a halfway house? And like I said, my mom lives four foot from the boundary line, and they'd said they're gonna put up a fence. The problem is that this household was built on my mom and dad's water, and it's built up on a, a hill, you know, basically hill built up. You'd almost have to have a fifteen to twenty-foot fence for those people not to be looking in my mom's house. And my concern and my fellow brothers is, um, the corner house and the house that was at the bottom, at this time, they're vacant. And the city hasn't done a very good job of forcing the people to own that property to mow their ten-foot weeds. So, people could go there and hide, anytime they wanted to. And that area is becoming a, a very high drug problem because of the low-income housings and Casey's. Uh, they've had the mobile police, uh, um, substations there to try to control the drug problems, and I don't think that we would, uh, think that we'd wanna put people that have problems that could get on the city bus, because that's another reason they wanted to move there, was to use the city bus for their transportation. Well, I, I'm quite sure there's lots of drug dealings and stuff that is done on that bus. And they're not supposed to have any contact with their husbands or boyfriends, well, that can be made there. And their spouses or boyfriends are not supposed to know where they live. That can be done quite often. And if I had a chance for somebody to say, hey, a hundred dollars, I, they're supposed to pay in some hundred dollars to live there. If I had a chance to live, coming out of jail or prison or wherever they're from, if I had a chance to go live somewhere for a hundred, for a year, pay a hundred dollars, I'd be a fool. You know, that's pretty good living and cheap, whether I wanna change my life or not, I mean, that's, I'd be a fool. Where can you live anyways for a hundred dollars a month and have a bus system to take you around and just play the game? So, therefore, I don't think these people are, are gonna be very good neighbors to my mom, and as it is already, as the crime rate has gone up, my mom has lived in that neighborhood for forty-nine years. And I don't think she could sell her house if the people knew that there was blank, blank, a spirit of love and hope or a half-way, halfway house. So the concern for my mom's safety is, is very, very concerning, that these people could know when my mom leaves and when she comes back. My mom happens to be a winter Texan, um, so, that's bad, you know, if these people don't, you know, I, I believe in everybody has a chance, and so does my mom. But I just don't think this is the area to have that, just because of the area that they had, you know, the crime, the, the possibilities they have, the privacy that my mom's gonna have.
Ma'am, your, your five minutes is up if you wanna kinda wrap your comments up.
Okay, I just wrap it up with the grandkids and stuff that are there, and you know, and I don't think anybody would want their grandkids to be around this either with this scare. Um, that's, I just want you to put yourself in my mom's shoes, her kid's shoes, the grandkid's shoes, for their safety and their personal life. And value of their home.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go to council, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Did someone move the consideration?
Okay, Alderwoman McGinnis, thank you, Tom.
Okay, there you are, thank you very much. Um, I had a couple of questions about the property. Um, I did go out today and look, look at it physically, cause I had a hard time sort of seeing it on the map, and sometimes I have to see things in person. Um, and these are, these may be questions for staff, um, rather than, um, the owner. Now, it, it's, uh, in the, in the information, the packet we were given, this was a, um, it was originally built as a two-family, but had been converted to single-family, according to what I read. Uh, and I'm asking for someone to, uh, you know, one of the staff to, to, to let me know, you know, to confirm this, I guess. Um, and there's some confusion, there are two kitchens and, and such, but it was a single-family house. So my question is, was it, you know, before, i- it's, it's life before this proposed use, uh, was it ever a rental? Do we know that? So, an inspectable property that would be inspected? That's my first question.
Uh, Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development, I believe the, the structure was built as a single-family legally converted to a duplex. Uh, as far as it being a rental property, I do not know.
Oh, okay. So, because my, I, I did also look at the summary, and it looks like the house is thirteen hundred square feet on the first floor, with three bedrooms there, and then, um, about seven hundred and thirty-four square feet on the, in the, what's called, they call the basement, and there's three bedrooms there. And I guess my question is, um, you know, and I did go by the house today, and it, it kind of looks like a split level, but the basement, the windows don't look like they're a, an egress window. Um, and so I, I started to have questions, not about the use, but about the conversion with bedrooms in a basement area that might not have egress out. And, and, you know, that is my question about then this rezoning. You know, typically, if it, if it became a rental, it would have to be inspected, it would have to be found safe for up to five, it could be up to five adults, correct? But if it, if it isn't a rental and it goes to a, a different classification, this higher classification, uh, as a rooming house, is it subject to inspection?
Uh, again, those would be beyond the purview of, of the zoning ordinance, so perhaps the city attorney or...
Okay.
Can, can speak to what triggers, uh, code, the code improvements that you described.
Okay.
What we can do before next week is get you information, if there's a rental history or a history of inspections, if anyone has gone out and checked the, uh, the windows in the basement to see if there, um, windows that would allow occupancy in the basement. So we can check between now and next week on those questions for you.
And one other point I noticed, the, in terms of, um, it said the fire department, I guess they've done some inspection, it says the fire department indicated that a fire suppression system may be necessary. So I don't know if there's anyone that can, from the fire department that can speak to that, or we could get some information perhaps next week. These are, so my questions are really about the safety of this property for this use with the, um, it's not a two-story, it's, it's, it seems to be one-story with kind of a half above ground, um, so those are, those are really my questions about this, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, honor. You know, first off, Lynn, can you tell us a little bit more about this ministry? Where you're based out of, and have you done this outreach before?
Um, no, we have not done this outreach before. Uh, it's based out of a jail ministry that I do and a need that I've seen for the girls, um, in my jail ministry that I do, um, in Rock Island and Scott County. And, uh, we based it off of reading a book called Miss Brenda and the Love Ladies, as sure as she did this exact same home down in Arizona. And it's still working today, and, uh, the owner of the home, um, has even stepped away and has the ladies running it now. Um, and it's been ongoing for twenty years. So we're basing it on that, and we've gotten off a lot of information from, uh, the one-eighty zone, Rusty has been very cooperative in helping us, uh, um, guide us on what we need to get started. Um, and I'm forgetting the last question that you had.
Uh, that's good, so you, you're work out of the Rock Island, the Scott County Jail system, ministering the feed.
I, I do a jail ministry, yes, I go in, go into the jails and I do a jail ministry, I meet with these ladies, um, every day, I also have connections with Mitchellville.
Thank you for your...
Um, I'll have to check on that.
Thank you, please do, cause this, somebody asked me and then they gave me a reference, and I, I mean, this, can't just bring people in and do business and do things without certain per, things going on. Ma'am, you mentioned, I'll just, so there's, did we agree, is this set at six people? You say yeah? Okay, so only six people getting it, but you mentioned they're gonna have an escort everywhere, and so does that mean twelve people? He's gonna, are gonna be in this place, or how much staff is gonna be here twenty-four seven? You can answer if you want.
Alderman Mattson, I think Bruce Berger might have some information on that, he's been in contact with them.
Okay, I'll take that after, ma'am, so is your intent to have six staff, twenty-four seven?
No.
Okay, so how many people in staff will be there twenty-four seven?
There'll be one housemother.
Okay.
And six women.
So if somebody wants to go, you'll have to call someone to come and then they'll escort them?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, we'll have, there'll be programs being run through the house, I mean, they'll have opportunities to get their GEDs, there'll be Bible studies.
There'll be a lot of people in and out of this place.
Exactly, there'll be cooking cat classes.
Where are they parking? I mean, I know this place well.
There's only gonna be a couple at a time, it's not like there's gonna be six.
This area, and we've had a lot of concerns, as was raised before, about this area, not particular to you guys, obviously, but we've had a ton of concern in the past, Alderwoman Tompkins is, is aware now, but in, when I was the alderman there, this area was hugely a concern with parking and other things that were mentioned, so if we're gonna have a ton of people in it, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Well, none of the women have a car, and the housemother doesn't have a car, so it'd just be volunteers, a couple volunteers will come in and do a Bible study, and there's two, there's two-car garage, and there's like places for four cars to park in the driveway.
Okay, thank you, so I, I would ask if you're gonna do it, I would certainly support a table, cause I think there's a lot of questions that need to be discussed, and inspect, I'm very concerned inspections have been done, nobody's been in there to look at this, not saying you guys have any problem, but we need to make sure it's squared away, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis again.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me speak again, um, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I hate that to keep having, running you back and forth. I am a little, now a little bit more confused, because I had also thought it was six people, but now you're saying six people and a housemother, that's seven people, so is it, are you requesting seven people total live there?
Yes.
Okay, so not six, but seven.
Six women and the housemother will be there.
And they, and the housemother will live in?
The housemother will live in, yes.
So it's seven people that would be living there, not six?
Yes.
Six in the house, okay, alright, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and I just had a quick question, Tom. You know, five or six years ago, we changed, you, you can, I'm sorry, I know you've been asked to come up and down a lot. Um, you know, we changed about six years ago, another portion of our code that regulated or dealt with shelters of, of all kinds, I believe, isn't that correct?
We had the PID-HSS, um, that had to do with shelters. And then we also had one, but I think that had to do with, uh, state, uh, ones that were under state contract. So it wasn't a voluntary situation, they were being placed there, and it was acting as a, um, alternative to six oh five main.
Well, I think one of the concerns we, yeah, one of the concerns, as I recall... Well, I think one of the concerns we, yeah, one of the concerns, as I recall, the council had at that time, again, five or six years ago, was the prevalence of, of houses being turned into shelters, but there was some discussion or concern or question about, you know, were these bona fide nonprofits, or was this a gentleman or a woman with good intentions? And, and so I, all of that contributed to, to, to the editing and updating of that code. Is that code applicable to this particular request?
Well, again, where it was dealing with, as far as correctional residency, if that's the right term, that had to do with people that were actually under contract with the state. So they were housing individuals that were on parole.
Okay.
Basically, and this is a voluntary program that people sign up for to stay there.
Well, and so I guess my request, either offline in a meeting or by, by email, is, is, I need to be refreshed by staff on what...
Where that ended up?
Yeah.
Why it doesn't apply?
We, we voted to make that change, we, we put a moratorium...
Right.
On granting rezoning or licenses for shelters for a period of time, and we, you know, we took some heat for that, and, and then, you know, changed our code. So I would like to know, I guess, you know, before next week or, you know, whenever, you know, refresh around what that code says, and then is it applicable to this particular case?
Sure, as it ran through the planners, I'm sure they took a look at that, but we'll, we'll put something together and get it to the council.
Alderwoman Rossen.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, I think really, I don't think, I don't feel this needs to be tabled at the moment. I think some of the points made about licensing are valid as well as inspections, and I think if staff can have that information to us by the next meeting, that would be very helpful, along with the other points that the mayor pro tem was saying, that would be great.
Thank you. And I think just for the, you know, the neighbors that, that express concerns, you know, this is a, an ordinance change, so if it were to be approved tonight, it requires two more votes, which is a four-week process, so, you know, that doesn't mean that it's, it's done tonight, just that it's moving on to a second reading. So I just wanted to kinda clarify that for, for you folks. So with that, seeing no other comments, Jackie, would you call a roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Meeker?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Nine yeses, your honor, one nay.
Okay, so that will move on to a second reading at next week's Committee of the Whole. Our second item is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of portions of vacated Rogowski Drive, Pleasant Street, Ripley Street, and three alleyways located in Block One and Two of Noel's Second Edition to the city of Davenport. St. Ambrose University is the petitioner, and I believe Alder, Alderman Gripp, as our planning economic development chair, has had some conversations. Do you wanna explain what we're gonna do? I think we're gonna need to table this.
Yes, the petitioner, St. Ambrose, has been working with the city, and they were potentially going to amend the resolution, they haven't been able to come to terms yet with the city, they're still working on it. So I would like to make a motion to table this until staff has had time to meet with the petitioner and come to terms.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, this will be tabled for, I think, is it two cycles?
Well, it's until we have our meeting, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that motion has been, or item has been tabled. Move the consideration a second, all in favor? Alright, roll call, we have to roll call that, my bad.
Tompkins?
Yeah.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Meeker?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes, except for number two on community development, which I'm abstaining from because of a conflict of interest.
Okay, ten yeses, your honor, except as noted on item number two on the community development agenda.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Okay, seeing none, are there any public with business this evening? Alright, seeing nobody. Any reports of city officials? Move to adjourn second, all in favor? Alright, we're adjourned.
Good job. Have a good evening.